We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order for Monday, November 18th, 2024. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Burden Jim?
Here.
Councilmember Bernatz?
Here.
Councilmember Lean?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Hoyt?
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda? Leah, Nick, Holly, Katie, Steve?
Mayor, the only question I have is, would it make sense to move Kelly's item under New Business ahead of 10, or do we want to keep it in order? So, in other words, yeah, move that before 10.
Leah?
But if we can't do the type of...
Okay. Is there any rebuttals or any objections to moving? Okay. Any other changes to the agenda, then? All right, seeing none, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda, moving item number...
12.
Item number 12 in New Business to precede item number 10.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion by Holly, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move on, then, to... Nothing under 5. Item 6 is our citizen comments. If there's anyone in attendance wishing to speak, feel free to come up here at this time. And then just to mention that there is a public hearing, which we have now moved, but if there's any comments as it pertains to that public hearing, I would ask that they happen during that public hearing, just for those watching at home, if they ever want to look at them at a later time. This would be for items not on the agenda.
All right, so just to clarify, the public hearing is on the data center?
No, the public hearing is on the vacation of a utility easement.
Okay.
So if there's any comments to be made on that item specifically, I would ask that they're held until that public hearing.
Okay.
It's just for a matter of record-keeping more than anything.
Well, I have one thing, well, I have a couple things, but after a year and a half, Aiken Road Project looks to be done. Last week, MacManero was out to remove the rest of the silt fence, they dumped more dirt, down the drop-off on the walking path across from me, placed straw down expecting grass to grow next year. Good luck with that. It's just thrown down there and another row of the plastic mesh stuff is just rolled out. You're not going to get grass to grow there. Also, the swale that they made for the water runoff still has trees laying in it that they knocked over to make it. What a half-assed job you let go by. Now, new issue. Can anyone on the council tell me how many public hearings you have had? And I'm talking public hearings that you did public comment on for the data center, the data building. How many public hearings? Which means, public hearings means you've taken public comment. Anyone? Number? How many public hearings have you had? Steve? Recall any public hearings that you had?
I believe on that topic, we've had zero, but the Planning Commission has had a few.
Watching the last city council meeting, people were up here afraid of talking about something that's on the agenda, because it says, you just stated, Mr. Mayor, that anything that's not on the agenda, that's what citizen comments is for, is anything that's not on the agenda. People stand up here thinking, okay, it's on the agenda, I'll have a chance to speak. Apparently, nobody's had a chance to speak on any of this at any given time. So my next question is, will you take public comment tonight before voting on the final plat of the DAV Center?
It's standard practice that the city council does not engage with residents during citizens' comments.
From the taxpayers of this city on a final plat? You've already changed the con-plan, which probably should have had a public hearing on that. All three of the things that you did last, at the last meeting, should have had a public hearing. You might want to check with the operation of how you guys are running this, because I think the League of Minnesota Cities would find that, you know, just as you did the road project, that you're doing things out of order. You're putting the city in jeopardy of litigation in many different ways. Not having public comment, not having the taxpayers be able to have their say in something that we're potentially paying for, or is going to impact the city. So again, will you take public comment on this agenda item? Because it's not on the, it's on the agenda, will you take public comment on it?
The city council takes public comment for items not on the agenda.
Are you going to take comment on it, then? Because it's on the agenda.
You have five minutes for your citizen's comment.
Mr. Wilson, will you make a motion to the council to take public comment on this agenda item of the data center? We got to be able to have our say. You're, this has gone ram-roaded right down. The last time I was here, you're talking about an AUAI, and that was in May. Tonight, you're doing the final plat, approving the final plat of something. They've got so many things on here that you're just not following. Public comment, number one. Number two, litigation. I have a document here from, and I was on the city council when we did this, orderly annexation agreement between Casa Rock. We worked our butts off back in my four years to make goods collaborate with the townships, Empire and Casa Rock, to have these orderly annexations. And in this orderly annexation, it says that you cannot have that kind of use on that lamp. And I've talked with people in Casa Rock, and they're getting their lawyers together. So you're going to put the city in litigation over this? And why should the city have to pay for you guys to have us in litigation, when you have a contract that says it's not supposed to be there? A contract is a contract. If somebody comes to your house and is going to do work, and you're going to sign a contract, do you expect that contract to be followed? Yes. Not for just a certain amount of time, neither. Not when you have public entities working together, and you're willing to just throw that away. The other thing is, you're willing to throw the, one of the heritages of Farmington away. The way that they're going to suck water out of the aquifers, this city's known for the Vermillion River, which is what? A trout stream. Suck all the water out of the aquifers, and where's that going to leave us? You're throwing the city down the damn drain. You ought to look at how you're doing this and do it a whole lot better, because your processes are just absolutely wrong. Holly, you want to say, you don't want this in your backyard, but when I watched that meeting a couple times, when I heard that, came out of my mouth was, you don't care about throwing it in somebody else's backyard. Let's back to train up a little bit. Are you going to take public comment on this thing? It's on the agenda. It's plain and simple. You know, you can say no, but I'll stand up right when this agenda item comes up, and we'll talk about it. Because by rights, I think that's, that's what's owed to me as a taxpayer. That's what's owed to anybody else in here that's in the city of Farmington. We're taxpayers. We deserve that. Will you take public comment? It's a yes or no answer.
Public comment is for non-agenda items.
No, public comment is for agenda items. This is, citizen comments is for stuff that's not on the agenda, but because it hasn't been taken, a public comment hasn't been taken for the last four, five, six months on this data center, I'm asking for it to be taken tonight. Public comment on what you should have done, three public hearings at the last meeting, all three of those items that you did potentially should have been a public hearing. You should have opened it up to public comment then. If we dig into that a little farther, maybe the League of Minnesota Cities won't answer for that. Again, you'd be putting the city in legal, in the legality again, litigation again, because of the way that you run things. Those all probably should have been public hearings, and all three of those should have been talked about at the last meeting. But you've got people up here, oh, we can't talk about that. They're saying stuff, no, we can't talk about that. That's the way you want your residents to feel? Because they're waiting for it to come up on the agenda, thinking, okay, I will bring it up here at citizen comments, I'll wait till it comes up on the agenda. But there was no opportunity. And that's what you clearly are stating by saying citizen comments are for things that are not on the agenda.
Citizen comments are also reserved to five minutes. I've extended you a little bit of a courtesy to extend your comments, as we have in previous meetings with you. If our city attorney would like to provide clarity as to why certain agenda items by statute require a public hearing, and that public hearing is held in the Planning Commission during the normal process, then she can weigh in at this time for that.
Yeah, we can have that discussion when we have the agenda item come up, is fine by me, but there were multiple public hearings at the Planning Commission, which satisfied those legal obligations, so, thank you.
Okay, that was asked at the Planning Commission, but when I was on the council, when we changed the con-plan, we had several public hearings when stuff comes up like this, whether it be the con-plan, whether it be developments, or what it has been. The council has, and the mayor has discretion, at his will, to take comment on something like this, and to have public hearings, and open it up to the taxpayers. Mr. Wilson, will you make a motion to table this?
Dave, your time has expired.
Issue until we find out whether those should have been public comments or not? Make a motion to table this, so that we can find out if we can get it on the agenda and have people do public comment. Will you make that motion?
I'll give my five minutes.
Dave, as someone who has served previously, you understand the rules of decorum.
You have the right to do whatever you want. You have the discretion to say, yes, we will take public comment. You're right, I know exactly how it works. But I also feel that when I was up on the council, the taxpayer had some goddamn say. And I think the taxpayers ought to have their say right now. And I don't want the city to lose a, we fought for years for Vermillion River because of the trout. What we did out of Vermillion River Crossing, when we had to go through trying to make that commercial thing, we had so much, the things that the city plan was working on of the buildings out there, we had to have fake facades on those buildings to make them just look so-so. Here, you're willing to throw 80-foot buildings in the city and make the thing look like crap. You either table it, or you say yes to public comment tonight. Simple as that. And you have the discretion, if you want your, the people that you represent, the taxpayers, you want to give them their say, this is your opportunity to step up.
Dave, your time has expired.
Don't make me get back up here when that, when item comes up on the agenda, because I will.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
I'm Jeff Schotler. I live at 22420 Calico Court. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Holly, Nick, Katie, Steve, thank you for coming over and taking a look at my house and seeing things from my perspective. That's what I've been asking for. Whether it changed any of yours, it changed my view of you guys being willing to look and listen and talk to me a little bit. It was a good conversation, it was polite, you were all more than nice. I appreciate that a ton. My family does, too. It meant a lot. Whether it changes the outcome or not, it meant a lot to us, and it showed to them... And it showed to them that I'm doing what I can to make it right for them. I'm trying every angle, I'm pursuing every avenue. Josh? I understand. I know why you didn't respond when I know you didn't come over. I get it. I've pushed the limits on what's acceptable, I guess, especially on a public platform. I've challenged you on multiple levels. I get it, I understand that. I apologize, I'll do a little better. I don't love what's going on, that's obvious, that's why I'm emotional, I'm shaking over it, that's why I had my little outburst. I get it was unprofessional. I appreciate you not pushing the envelope and doing something about me swearing in public, or whatever you want to say, you know? This is all of our towns. It's your town, it's our town, it's my town, it's everybody's town. It's all of our town. We set the rules in our town, that'll work for all of our residents, not just a few. Some company doesn't set the rules in this town, we set the rules. You know that Trac called me tonight? After I met with everybody, I sent them the email that I sent to you guys, and then she called me. I don't know if it was based off of your comment to her, or if it was off that email. She offered 100-foot buffers for my house and two others. There's a lot more people on that property. I appreciate, because I've maybe been the loudest and crazy, caused the most crap, that they're giving me a little attention, but it ain't just about me. This is two communities, they're all neighbors. Trac promises to be a good neighbor, they claim to be good neighbors. This is the first clear sign that Trac's true intention of not being a good neighbor by only caring about three people. The things that they've offered have essentially been full windows, buffers, it's not costing them anything, it's not changing anything, it's not going to be impacting anything. We were all out there today, yesterday, saw those trees. Those trees are dead. Whatever they're going to plant, it's not going to offer nothing for 10 years, this is Minnesota, we've got four, five months a year without leaves, anything. Sound travel's pretty good in the winter. Trac also said the 250-foot setbacks are non-negotiable. Trac said the 250-foot setbacks are non-negotiable. Why is Trac deciding what's negotiable in our town? Why does she have the right to say what's negotiable? Why do they have that right in our town, in your town? You guys get to set the bar and set the precedent for what happens in our town, not some developer. You set a, you've set an example, you're willing to work, you're willing to look at, you're willing to put the money and the time and the effort into letting this happen, set some real standards and guidelines. If they don't like it, they'll leave. Somebody else will come, the whole world, the whole data center world's watching you guys. They're listening, they're waiting for them to walk, for you to put a good set of buffers and regulations on to respect the residents. You'd have an offer by the end of the month if they walked out the door today, but it could be on your terms, not theirs. Don't let some company that's not from Farmington. There's 300 years of residents, 400 years of residents in this room, probably, along with you guys. We know what works in this town, what belongs in this town, and how to treat its residents, and where to put things. They don't, they're not from here. We're real people with real homes, real families, real children. I can't bring my daughter in here. I couldn't even bring my daughter out when you guys were there today. When I talk about this and I look at her, I get choked up, I see red. I don't act right. We built and bought these homes and put our blood, sweat, and tears into them. We've done this to create a safe and honorable place to raise our families. Please put the proper restrictions in place to help protect our families and preserve some sense of our honor and pride. We know we're not going to get everything, something's got to go there. Do it right, so that we're still proud of our homes, so that none of us feel the need to leave there, so it's not so impactful that we worry about the things we don't know. Make it right. And if they don't like it, somebody will. The land will sell, it doesn't have to be the first one. They just learn to play baseball, and they're shooting for home runs on every swing, they're not even waiting for their pitch, they're coming in, shooting for home runs, and setting demands. We're not negotiable. We are negotiable, it's Farmington. It's your rules, not theirs. One of you, please, be a beacon of light for the entire community, stand up to Trac, have the courage, amend the beauty, do it right. You know what's right, you know what's acceptable, you know what we've been asking for. I've told each one of you what I'm asking for, the distances, I showed you with markers what's out there. I got to believe it's as obvious to every one of you as it was to everybody else, that that's too close. It's just too close. I ask if you vote tonight, vote with a clear conscience, with each and every resident in mind. Not just some, but all of them. We're all here, we're all residents, we got hundreds of years of residency here. We're all neighbors, and we're all a community. That's all I got. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all you guys giving me the time.
Thank you.
I'm Mayor and Councilman Nate Ryan, live here in Farmington. So what I'd like to talk about tonight is just really kind of three simple things. The first one being the, what Dave was talking about, and just kind of the wrong process this is going. Very, very first Planning Commission meeting, got up here and spoke, it was a public meeting, talked, and really talked about the process and how it was wrong. The Planning Commission at that time decided to table that, they said, let's wait a second, let's just table that. And from every point there, there has never been a back and forth. You're going to see Trac come up here tonight, and you're going to allow them to have a back and forth with you, just like Dave tried to do. And the mayor is up there, and he's quoting policy, it's the policy of the council. Policy is not law. I sent that to you all in an email. Policy is not law. There is no law that says that we can't have a back and forth with you. There's no law that says that. It's you providing that as a policy, Mr. Mayor, it's you, and it's your choice. With great power becomes great responsibility, right? That's the Superman, or not, I'm sorry, the Spider-Man quote, right? That's the thing. And you have great power, well, you should have great responsibility as well. And you're going about this the wrong way. As Dave mentioned, litigation, that has been what I've been talking about every single time that I've been up here. You're opening yourselves up to litigation. Like Dave, I've had an opportunity to serve on a city council, on a planning commission. And the one thing that the League of Minnesota Cities beat into my head, from the very first moment, the very first time that I went to one of their meetings, is follow the guidelines and you won't get sued. Watch out for litigation mistakes. Watch out for, hey, you're doing things the wrong way, especially planning and zoning. I had the unfortunate opportunity to be involved in two federal lawsuits, I got to be sequestered in a magistrate's chamber for, I don't know, 36 hours, 72 hours, it was wonderful, it was the best time of my life. But the reason that we were there, and the reason that we were there is because we were following policy, we were doing things the right way. And doing things the right way still can end you up in trouble, right? Still can end you up in litigation. You're doing things the wrong way, and you're going to get litigated against. This is, this is going to cost you more in the initial year, just in your insurance payments with the League of Minnesota Cities. Your cap is $4 million, I explained that to you. I explained that to you on a sidewalk, the very first time that we met, Mr. Mayor. You have these policies, you have these insurance in places. Once you get past that $4 million mark, you're going to have to bond to your own citizens to fight or to litigate your own citizens. That is crazy. That is absolutely absurd. And the reason, not only that, that's just, that's just the zoning side, the First Amendment side of things, allowing none of us to speak or have a back and forth, like you did with Trac, and like you have done with Trac, time and time again. They're going to get up here as an applicant, the landowner's not even with them. Bryce has attended one meeting, Carol's, I don't think Carol's been to any meetings. The landowner, the person who actually owns the land, who has the most valuable asset, they're not even here. And you're listening to someone who doesn't even own land, you're listening to someone who hasn't, doesn't even pay a cent in taxes. And you're letting them choose. So, again, so first, litigation, listening to people, policy, understand that, this is a policy. You should have a back and forth. It should be what you want. You should be able to have that conversation, Mr. Mayor, that you and I had out in the parking lot. You should be able to have that with your citizens here in an open setting, in an open forum. But for some reason, you're afraid to. And if it's her, and I'm pointing at the city attorney telling you not to, what the hell are you doing? Why are you listening to her? Listen to us. Listen to the citizens. You're afraid to get litigated here because she's telling you something, listen to us. But you're allowing her to say, oh, let Trac come up and talk, have a back and forth with them, but don't do it with your citizens, the ones that you absolutely owe it to? That is not serving with honor. Now, speaking directly to you, Mr. Mayor, because you understand what the word "honor" means, and you are not serving with honor. One of the worst things that could ever happen on a DD 214 is a dishonorable discharge. And I thought that after our meeting, when we talked, I really had a different opinion of you. And then today, and then watching what's happening with this final plat, and how these things are moving ahead so quickly, they sat there and lied to you, and said, we don't have an end user. If you don't have an end user, why the hell are you moving this fast? They are playing you guys. They are absolutely playing you, and you just don't even see it. You don't even understand the impacts of what you did by rezoning this property. We could have five hotels, they could decide, you know what, screw the city of Farmington, to heck with you guys, don't want to be here. They could put in a trucking facility there now, because you changed it to mixed-use commercial-industrial. Anything that's in approved use, you can do, they can now put in there now. You did that, all of you. Katie wouldn't even look at us. I went back and watched the meeting, how many times she made eye contact with the entire crowd? Four. Four. She wouldn't even look at us. And you call that serving with honor? I know what I serve with honor, I can look at people, I can look at their eyeballs, and I can tell them and say, hey, this may not feel the best, this may not feel the right, but let me explain why these things are right. The only reason that any of you have ever given why this feels right is tax revenue. How much tax revenue is enough? You're already getting the Bengal project, and if this thing got scaled back to six buildings instead of 12, what would that tax revenue look like? Honestly, like what, like what would that tax revenue look like? Oh, it's only 1.5 million, it's not 3. Aw, crap. Only get 1.5 million. When I spoke in front of the Met Council, I said this, I'm going to, I've got one more thing, I'm going to say this, I'm going to say one more thing after this, but I've got this for you. Trac is a billion-dollar company. You're hoping to make a few million off of the backs of people who make a few thousand. Think about that. They're a billion-dollar company. You're going to help them make another billion dollars. They do not give a shit about you, they do not give, certainly a shit about anyone in this room, they do not care. All they want is the land, so they can make billions of dollars. I will never spend a billion dollars in my entire lifetime, neither will you. Maybe as you go throughout your career as a counselor, and if you aspire to other higher government positions, you may end up spending a billion, but it won't be your money, it'll be taxpayers' dollars. Not spending your money, you're paying our money. Just think about that, people make a few thousand bucks a year. You're going to enrich a billion-dollar company for another billion. The last thing that I'll say is, I would... I had a call from Kristen Dean, because I asked her to call me earlier tonight as well. And we were talking about, you know, she's like, what's your address? I gave her my address, and she goes, you're 1,100 feet away. You're not even going to be impacted at all. If she knows that, she knows that distance so well, so quick, so 1,100 feet, you're not going to be impacted, then why the hell can any of you choose to make these setbacks further? If I'm not going to be impacted in their eyes at 1,100 feet, and it's going to be totally hunky-dory, totally okay, why not make those setbacks? Why not break them down to six buildings? Why not settle for 1.5 million in tax revenue? It's 1.5 million that we didn't have before. Is that a 3? Nick talked about, you know, well, this isn't spot zoning. I sent you an email, Nick, never replied to me. I'm very curious what your legal opinion is about spot zoning. You quoted it, and you said it at the city council meeting last time. What's your legal opinion? Why do you think this is not spot zoning? Don't look to the attorney to see if you should answer, because she's going to say, no, don't answer that question. Please, Nick, don't answer that question. But seriously, I'll leave you with that last question, the last thing I ask you. If we can have any sort of back and forth, what is your legal position on spot? Why do you think this is not spot zoning? Tell us all. Tell the recording, tell us all. And don't let her not let you answer.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
I'm Kathy Johnson, and I live at 22280 Bering Avenue. Thanks for those of you who went to Schotler's today to look at just how close 250 feet is, to get a visual of it. is, to get a visual of it. And I know that I was there earlier in the week, and it's preposterous, what is being proposed. But the thing that's really sad is that it's even on your shoulders. Because here's what's happened, 10 years ago, the state of Minnesota gave tax incentives for data centers to come in with tax forgiveness. And at that time, tax, data centers were a whole lot smaller than they are now. There was, there's no regulation on them, because 10 years ago, they probably didn't think that was necessary. But unfortunately, that's still true today. And data centers are not the same animal that they were 10 years ago. This project doesn't belong in MUCI by any stretch of the imagination. It is not mixed-use, it's single-use. And anytime, it's 760 megawatts, that makes it the biggest electric user in the state. And my husband did some research, it is the seventh-largest DC campus, when measured by electrical requirements in the world. And that is going in the middle of residential, 250 feet from somebody's house. And I agree, Jeff, I mean, that, to say, "We'll give you an extra 100" is ridiculous. 80 feet tall. Today, I was in a conversation with somebody who lives not that far from the event center that's in Cast, and that's actually Empire, on Highway 50. He would be able to see the top of those 80-foot-tall buildings two miles away. This is incompatible with the existing use. Residents are being asked to sacrifice our property value, our standard of living. And I really liked Nate's comment, why do you have to have this much data centers? If it was smaller? I mean, I really wish it wasn't a data center, but if it was there and it was much smaller, it would probably have a much smaller impact. But it's really sad that it's on your shoulders, it's really sad the state isn't stepping in and saying, "You know what? Data centers aren't the same as they were 10 years ago, when we made the regulations here, and we need to revisit that, because what's happening shouldn't be on your shoulders. You shouldn't have to grapple with this, and be, and you shouldn't be put in a situation where you're being played by Trac." Yes, you are being played by Trac. They care more about their bottom line than they do the citizenry. Why else is that 250-foot absolutely not negotiable? That's absurd. It needs to be at least 500 feet back, with at least a 200-foot buffer before that. The fact that you would think nothing of putting this into our yards, in our backyards, doesn't speak well for how you feel about Farmington citizens, families. I mean, I'm Castle Rock, but I've lived here for 45 years. We basically built our house, and planted every tree, and laid a grass on it. And now, all of a sudden, at the whim of Trac Developments, a Colorado company? A Colorado company is coming in and telling Minnesota cities and the state of Minnesota how to allocate the resources, our water, our electricity, how to, how they want, and how they vision the change in the standard of living and the quality of life for our citizens. This is our town. The heck with Trac. To heck with them. They really don't care about us, and I agree with Nate, I think they're definitely playing you. We need, do, we do need state regulation, but the best thing that you can do in the meantime is to table this, and take a look realistically, like those of you who looked at Jeff's place today. What is gonna happen to, to the families that live over there? And what's gonna happen to the families that live on the east side of Bering Avenue, or on 225th? We're not sacrificial lambs. That data center doesn't belong in this location, and certainly not at that scale.
Hello, my name is Steve Cheddar, I live in 19750 Exella Court in Farmington. And I'm a licensed structural engineer in 10 states, including Minnesota, and...
Could you speak closer to your mic?
I will, thank you. I'm a licensed structural engineer in 10 states, including Minnesota, and I'm personally working on a data center right this second in a different state. And I can say anecdotally that I would never want this abomination in my town. It is literally a machine that never stops, never, it's never quiet. It requires constant power, constant cooling, constant lighting, constant security, is equivalent to a massive power plant in your city. Except it's gonna draw the power from your city instead of provide it. I don't really have any additional comments, other than just to say that I, as I mentioned, I'm literally working on one of these today. At my desk, I literally was working on the engineering for this exact kind of facility in a different state. And I wouldn't want this in my town, ever. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yep. My name is Terry Pearson, 2475 225th Street West, 50 feet, 40, 50 feet off the line with the golf course. And what I want to try and impress upon you is, you have wasted money. You did the survey to find out what wonderful things that Farmington needed, and what the people appreciated, and all of that. You also did that, I think it was $25,000 commercial on Farmington. And what I can tell you is, with these people that live right around, between those two residential areas, that we have found our community, we have found Farmington. We trust each other, we have, you know, cared for the school district, all of those kinds of things over the years. And you needn't look any further than these two, these two residential areas. And, and I can only hope that the rest of Farmington is replicating that. Thank you.
My name is Gary Johnson, 22280 Bering Avenue, Farmington. I would like to thank you for your time and letting me get up here and speak. I'd also like to apologize ahead of time, because when I get excited and passionate, sometimes my voice is right, rises, doesn't mean I'm yelling. I'm gonna expound on several things that my wife said, maybe add a little bit. I wrote a letter to all of you on November 3rd, before you took your vote on the rezoning. Two items I addressed. One is the size of this monster. 760 megawatts of power is more than Monticello Nuclear Power Reactor generates. Prairie Island's two nuclear reactors would generate a little over 200 megawatts more power than this will take. This will be the seventh-largest data center area, some of these are considered areas, and this is just one center, in the world, as of an article on January 1st of this year. So, it's a monster. It is no longer what the state offered tax incentives to bring into the state to try to help or get involved in it. It has grown proportionately larger, and the state needs to take action. The other thing I commented on was some history of planning in this community. Many, many years ago, I forget exactly how, it was probably 10, 15, 20 years ago, there were many comments in the paper about developers coming in and proposing new housing developments. And people were starting to comment, saying, "The developers are telling the city what to do, rather than the city telling the developers what we would like to see." The city stated after that, that they would make some changes. Now, when I see this process go through, I don't see where any changes were made. The planning commission had their first meeting in May. At that meeting, the chairman of the planning commissal, commission stated that this was brand-new to him. Several months later, he made the statement that it had been around for about a year and a half. Well, in that year and a half time, how many citizens were informed? How many people were given the opportunity to talk? It wasn't until notices went out to people 350 feet away from the property line, that anybody knew this was going on. Thank God for somebody raising red flags, and people going out and door-knocking to announce a public meeting. We filled this room. When the chairman saw that, he was floored. They proceeded with their meeting, people got up here and spoke, not one person raised any positive comments on the data center. Not one. Conclusion of that meeting, they were afraid to take a vote. I really think they were planning on taking a vote that meeting, but they were afraid to take their vote. They decided to put it off. First, it was one month, and then it was two or three months. So I don't know how long it took you and Trac to decide what you wanted to say, or how you wanted to respit it. But the meeting was finally held. Again, it was a full house. Not one person stood at this location and raised a positive comment. Everything was negative. They closed the meeting, took a unanimous vote. Now, the rest has been on you. And you aren't slowing anything down, you're moving just as fast as they were. Why? Why? You don't, the city of Farmington does not have the knowledge of how to deal with a massive structure like this. This is a hyperscale database center, bigger than nuclear power plants. What do you know about that? You should not be making these decisions. I ask you tonight to stop this, vote no, and join our citizens group to go to the state and ask the state to put a moratorium on all database construction in this state, until they can conjoin some kind of a task force with knowledgeable people from all the different aspects of influence, or, or whatever, and come up with some size standards for the different databases, and regulations that fit those sizes. Please, please, consider what you're doing tonight, and giving some thought to helping us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Mor Feshami, I live on 2528, county, farming, 220th Street in Farmington, right next to the golf course. My comments seem to echo some of what you heard before, I promise you, I did not collaborate with them. It just shows how the feelings are unanimous of the people in this area. In your last meeting, you approved the rezoning of the golf course and two other tracks, for a day hyperscaler data center that sits between two established residential community as mixed-use commercial-industrial. I get it, that you're here tonight to approve the amendments that was made to the PDU. Some of you understood that the ordinances governing the mixed-use commercial-industrial don't even come close to being relevant to a hyperscaler data center, something that is 205 square foot, 750 megawatts of power consumption. You heard the group here already about the significance on that. I'm tremendously appreciative of the council members that understood the gravity of this data center, and either voted no, or tried to make changes to the track proposal to make it easier on the residents. Very much appreciative of that. I think the problem is that this use case is not mixed-use commercial-industrial. What is being proposed is not mixed-use commercial-industrial. It is heavy industrial. This mixed zoning, this is not mixed-use, because it's a single-use, there's only one tenant, so, let's call it what it is, it is not mixed-use. It is not commercial, in a sense that none of its intended customers are from Farmington, from this county, nor probably not even Minnesota. It is not truly industrial. What is unprecedented, with its unprecedented appetite for power and water, it is really heavy industrial. The concern I want to register with you tonight is that mixed use. Our state regulators did everyone a misjustice by not getting in front of this many years ago. Because, again, data centers are small, they were not hyperscalers. This is hyperscaler, and you're unfortunately faced with making decisions where you don't have the same resources as the state does, either technical, either zoning, environmental. So you are tasked with the unfortunate task of getting in front of this hyperscaler. Nothing like it is in the state today. So, you're forced to make those decisions, not just for this instance, but other places in Farmington, that somebody else may come to put another data center. So this is not a single-use case, please. As you make changes to the PDU, think about where else somebody else may come and want to put a hyperscaler data center. As you're going through reviewing the changes, the variances that are mentioned, a lot of them, some of you have seen, been to people's properties, have seen how close this can be in reality, not in, just in pictures and documents. If I could suggest, 100-foot setback, certainly what Trac is proposing is not adequate for that level of hyperscaler data center. Berms probably need to be hired, they mentioned walls, I don't know what that means, but it is in the revised PDU, without any specifics, they may use it, they may not, who knows what that is. Limiting building heights to reduce the impact to the adjoining area. Again, this is not just this case, it is if somebody else comes in and wants to build something like this somewhere else in the Farmington, a community. And limiting the number of buildings per acre, is something you can definitely do. I also have a number of questions. The document that Tony sent out, does the city own this, or is this Trac's property? There are some items that are either incorrect, or need clarification in the document.
Once the document is published and an agenda becomes a matter of public record, so you making a copy of it, essentially you own that copy. But when it comes to the jurisdiction for review, amendments, alterations, that ultimately falls on city staff and/or the, the appointed or elected body to approve any changes to the document.
Okay. So, Tony's not here, so I would raise just a few questions. Oh, on page four, item six, it says, "This PUD shall have municipal sewer and water service available as the proposed project progresses." Does that mean for the entire facility, and Farmington is responsible to provide them with the, the, those facilities?
So, because that item is on the agenda, and we've shuffled the order of it, if Tony would go out and chat with him when he's finished?
Okay.
We have an item that Tony would not be involved on prior to.
Okay. That, that is fair. I will put, I will talk to Tony about those items. Again, in closing, I want to thank all the council members that put their heart and soul in doing what is right. Please, think about, it's not just this one instance, you're setting up standards... You're setting up standards for other things similar to this that would go into other communities. Again, some of these guard layers, some of these standards, minimum set of standards should have been done by the state. They didn't do their job, made your job easier. I hope you'll do what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you going to take some comments or comments at the agenda item? Because as people are speaking here, I'll get back up, I have items to take care of or to present since people are going, they're like talking like this is going to be the agenda item, so I'm going to get back up to the podium unless you want to take all the comments at the agenda item.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Arstid, 22165 Beaumont Avenue. I am here for this microphone and that camera. I am here to speak to Farmington residents since these city officials will not. Residents, I know you are busy. You're raising your families and trying to make a living, but sadly, you really need to start paying attention to what the city is doing. Do you know that the new comp plan update shows they plan to change the south end of Farmington into industrial? Do you even know that? The map is on their website. Do you know we have three different sets of NDAs between the City of Farmington and Technology Park entities? At least that's what it looks like. We know the two data centers. What's going on with this third? Why the industrial zoning on the south end? Tony says there's nothing going on with the third. They are not going to tell you until it's too late because that's how this city works. They play very dirty. The city was required to engage the community and get citizen input before they amend and update their comp plan. And they threw some special meetings up on their website last minute. Dozens of us showed up on October 30th at City Hall, and we stood for two solid hours in the hallway and begged, and I mean begged, Holly B., the only council member there, to vote for us, to support us and not against us. We brought research and facts. And just a few nights later, without a blink, Holly voted against us, along with Josh Hoyt, Katie and Nick. Thank you, Steve, for standing for us. November 12th, another special community engagement meeting. Oops, canceled by the city. Day of, no explanation given. They don't want your input. Good news, December 10th, there is a tentative public hearing on their website. Bad news, they've already voted November 4th to put the seventh-largest data center in the world right next to our homes. They schedule public hearings after they make the critical votes, so you really don't get an input. They think you are stupid. The city has required, was required to get responses from surrounding communities on their comp plan amendment they sent to the Met Council. They gave our surrounding communities only 30 days to respond on the letter, not the required 60 days. They know that is true because they are in a rush to get this passed, and they play dirty. They think surrounding communities are stupid too. They won't catch on that 30 days were shaved off, right? This city clearly thinks the 60-day rule by the Met Council is stupid too. They don't have to follow rules and have integrity. The city will play dirty whenever they can by whatever means necessary to meet this date. And the city knows that they aren't following the annexation agreement they have with Castle Rock, but they play dirty. They have their attorney look for loopholes so they can claim that they don't have to comply. They think Castle Rock is stupid too, don't they, Josh? They know the intent of the annexation agreement, but they don't care by whatever means necessary, right, council? Right, Kristen? Shout out to Holly B. She is starring in a film, a docu-series, My Town. Look it up on YouTube and Facebook. Please comment. My Town, about rural towns, how great rural towns are. The film's mission, to learn why people choose to live where they do and to discover the opportunities, the innovation and connectedness found in rural communities. Holly B. is a featured star. The funny part is she and the council, who took the rural away from thousands of us while we begged her not to, and then stars in a movie about our great rural town. Kind of funny. We all knew Holly was quite an actress. The city paid $25,000 to be in the film. Lord knows they need some good PR. That is hypocrisy. I've emailed the council multiple times. I've never received one response from Nick, Katie, or Josh Hoyt. Not one return message. These people don't want your input. Farmington residents, there's something called the Sunshine Laws. It gives ordinary people like me the right to public documents at reasonable costs so ordinary people can afford them and have access to them. A law for the little guy. They are meant to foster transparency and trust in government. I requested records from the city a while ago, all documents between Tract and the city officials, electronic copies so it's easy, and even offered to drop off a flash drive. The rules state that they cannot charge me for an attorney to redact information or time to separate public info from private info. They can charge only actual costs plus the hourly wage plus benefits of a city employee doing the actual retrieving, and they can't charge me Deanna wages. Right, Deanna? Ouch. They can only charge me what a clerk gets paid if clerks do this job. I got a quote three weeks later. They found 2,558 emails via keyword search and 1,500 documents for a charge of what, $7,000. Estimate. Estimate is underlined and in italics. Payment needed upfront. They are charging me 93 hours of employee time to transfer the emails they found via keyword search and documents onto a flash drive. Yes, 93 hours, two and a half weeks of full-time pay. The hourly rate they're charging me is what? $73 an hour. They make pretty good money at the city. I am in the wrong business. I asked for a breakdown of the quote. Eight days later, I got an updated quote. The number of emails increased by almost 1,000 in just one week's time. There must be a flurry of communication going on this last week between you guys and Tract. Now, the grand total is $8,000. This is your city. This is how they treat you. I'm betting we'll find that the issue was never if Tract was going to get that land, but rather just a matter of when they were going to get that land. I'll come back and give updates. So you think, so they think I'm stupid. They think these people are stupid. They think you are stupid. They don't play fair, and they play dirty. They will do whatever they think they have to do. This has all been willful neglect of the people. Pay attention tonight, residents. Watch what this city votes on and passes on tonight. They never asked for our input. They never came to us in a good faith meeting asking what changes could be made to make the largest data center in Minnesota easier to live by, since they are going to force it on us anyway. Stay tuned and watch. They will plow forward without city codes created for data centers, and they will plow forward without asking us because they are in bed with Tract, and they all play dirty. They will force this data center on us using any means necessary. Farmington residents, please start paying attention. Thank you.
My name is Randy LaRoche, and I live at 215th Street in Farmington. I just wanted to let everybody know that this does not just affect those two neighborhoods and a few residents. It also affects the adjacent neighborhoods such as Sapphire Lake in Park Place. I spent three hours on Sunday going door-to-door knocking on my neighbors, notifying them, telling them what's been going on. I talked to over 30 residents in Sapphire Lake. Over half had no idea what was going on less than a mile south of us. I just don't understand how us residents living that close weren't even aware. I learned a month ago from a Facebook feed. Let's see, sorry. I'm not a public speaker. I just wonder what else I could have done to help inform my community, my neighbors, because that's what we do in a community. But I feel like it's been late. I'm late in the game, and I need more time, and not all voices have been heard. I just want to say that us living in South Farmington, we feel completely blindsided by our city. It affects a whole lot more people than you have accounted for, as most of us weren't even aware of what has been going on. Our voices have not been heard.
One important thing that the last lady had talked about was the communication, how she has to go to all her neighbors and nobody knows. When I was listening to that, I'm like, why didn't the city send out a letter like you did when you did the Aiken Road project? Of course, you only gave us four days' notice, but at least all the residents and the taxpayers would have known what the hell was going on. And so that's just, you know, you guys are, again, clearly going to say some things out here that I think you ought to take into consideration. The first one is your whole process of public hearings and not-public hearings, and again, making the taxpayers aware of this. We can, you know, us residents can get lawyers together, just as Castle Rock is getting lawyers together because of the annexation agreement. But, you know, when it comes to the process, us taxpayers can get lawyers together, and we can fight the system and say, how wrong did you do the processes? So table this until you know that the three public hearings that you probably should have had at the last meeting were, weren't done. Was that legal? Was it not legal? You're going to need time to do that, so I would not take a vote tonight on that. I urge the taxpayers of Farmington step up and we'll find out what the processes are because clearly you don't, clearly you don't know. I mean, I said before, when we did Vermillion River Crossing, the commercial development, we had processes in place. We had to jump through hoops. We had a city planner at that time bring us things that we had to do this, 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 and this, just to do that. Here? No. You guys are rubber stamping this thing right, right, right down the road. And like I said, I said it before, how far did, how fast did this get? I had no idea in the spring of this year, when you had somebody come in and talk about AUAI, it says nothing about a data center. And that was this spring. Councilmembers, we were told this over and over and over when I was up there. We're policymakers. You guys are policymakers. You're supposed to make the policy, and the city follows your direction to make those policies happen. You know, it wasn't that way 15 years ago. When I was up there, we had a lot of direction from the staff that, oh, we got to do this, we got to do this. You know what? The staff ran this council 15 years ago, still doing that same damn thing today. You ought to look into saying, you know, step back and say, what do you guys stand for? You stand for the city. That's what I did when I was on the council. I stood for the city, and when it wasn't right, I spoke up. City water restrictions for residents. I can't water between noon and 6 o'clock, and I can only water on odd days from my address. What restrictions would you have on these people? Could they not pump water out of the aquifers from 12 to 6? Probably not. They'd have to shut their business down. But hell, I would get a fine. I'd have the water board come to my house and give me a ticket for watering between noon and 6. Well, I get it. We want to try to conserve water. You know, I ran very little water on my new yard that I put in at my expense, or I say it's defense, but I had to sue you, but I ran very little water because I left the grass long and then half the water all the time. Very, just in the fall when it dried, when it was dry. So water, you know, conservation is the biggest thing. But again, we're going back to how much, how much restrictions are you going to have on those? How much water are they going to pull out of the aquifers? Again, I'm going to go back to, you know, when I was on the council, the Parks and Rec director back then, if I'm not mistaken, we're one of two cities in the United States that has a river run through our city. I believe the other one was Vale, Colorado. You guys are willing to throw that down the frickin' tubes. Trout stream and all, right down the frickin' tubes. That's your heritage. Think about it. Let it sink in a little bit. That's what we stand for. I talked about the Vermillion, the trout stream there, the damage to it. How much payment will the city get from Tract for tapping into existing infrastructure out there that developers put in? Why should they reap the benefits of what developers had to do to build houses out there? Executive estates, other ones, but that's the one that's right out there. They ran all the infrastructure out there. I'm suspecting that when they, Tract runs the infrastructure on their property, they're just going to tag into that, into those lines, all right? Elementary. Of course they will. And the developers and the taxpayers are all part of that. Where's their part? Not going to be any part. The city does not, I mean, we talk about Vermillion River Crossing, how, like I said, we had buildings out there that we had to take, put fake facades on the top of them so that we couldn't see air conditioners and what else is on the top of them. We were set on heights, certain heights out there. We could, the heights of the building could only be so much. I built my garage 20-something years ago. I could only be from the concrete to the ridge of the roof, 20 feet. 80-foot buildings? Where the hell those belong in Farmington? Nowhere. I mean, stick them down in Minneapolis where the high-rises are. That's where that shit belongs, not here, not in our city. After the annexation agreement, again, I talked to somebody this weekend. They're having their lawyers, and, you know, I run a business. I come to your house to do windows, what have you. I have a contract. Hey, unless I run into something that I can't foresee, you know, for my type of business, then there is change orders. But other than that, I write you a contract, goddamn it, I follow it. This contract was worked on back in 2005 with other people that had served on the board in Castle Rock. How would you feel if we just threw a contract away? You came and hired me to do a job and just threw the contract away and said, oh, no, this is it. We're just going to, you know, I'm not going to put that one to it. I'm going to put this one in. That's too frickin' bad. There's litigation right there. Any city attorney could set, you know, like the other person said, city attorney could find a loophole in it, but I'll be damned. I don't find loopholes in contracts. When I sign them, I abide by them. Somebody brought up before the end user in this. Who is the end user? We don't know. Well, let's go back to the river, the water, and everything else. Who might be the end user? Let's say it's 3M. Look what the fuck's going on with 3M and Cottage Grove and the water. Think about it. Table this and get these people out the hell out of this hell.
Anyone else?
I got one more thing, mayor. I asked my wife to come up and speak, but frankly, she just... she just, she doesn't like talking to adults. She's a school teacher. So one thing I'd just like to just mention really quick, simply is around this term. And it has bothered me and I've mentioned it since day one, is technology park. And I told you that it was not in city code, nowhere. Nowhere does it exist in city code. And Tony has come to say, and well, that's fine. It's, we're just going to call it a technology park. It's not going to confuse anyone, right? No one's going to be confused. This is on Facebook, FFS. For fuck's sake is what that means. A technology park is not a data center. Light industrial is also not a data center. Technology parks can be offices, research, development facilities, and a number of things. People should not arbitrarily assume it's another data center. They were talking in reference to the Bango project. FFS. It is a data center. It's absolutely a data center what's going in at the Bango project. And you talk about litigation because Tony continues to use this term. He's confusing people. It's not a term that's in city code. It's not a term that should be used to define a project of this scale. Also, they're saying light industrial is not a data center. They are assuming that you were protecting them by zoning things not on light industrial. You're protecting them. You're not. You decided, and I am saying you because you voted on it, you decided to make it mixed-use commercial industrial and that which that zone or that district allows for light industrial. This has been time and time again a heavy industrial. There's a gentleman sitting right over there. He runs Dakota Electric. I talked to him after the meeting and I said, hey, these people don't know what they just voted on. They have no idea. They think that they're voting on mixed-use commercial industrial. They have no idea that they just voted on a heavy industrial project. And I mentioned it to him again tonight. And he goes, oh, they know. They know. Don't take it from me. Have that guy come up here and tell you how many users across Minnesota, or not even across Minnesota, just for Dakota Electric use seven hundred megawatts. And anywhere close to that, what is the zoning which that they use? Is it light industrial zoning or is it heavy industrial zoning? And where is that threshold? From an energy consumption standpoint, where's that threshold? There's a threshold there. I don't know what it is. That guy's smart. He wears a suit. At least he looks smart. Where's that threshold? Is it fifteen megawatts? Well, back in two thousand and fifteen, when data centers were first entered into city code, the average data center, sorry, sorry, when data centers were first entered into city code in two thousand and fifteen, the average data center was five megawatts. Five! And that was considered a light industrial use. This is seven hundred. And and if you don't think that there's not a litigation claim, Jennifer Bordeaux just made a very, very awesome claim for litigation. She is notably confused on a social media platform about Tony's use of a technology park. She has no idea what it is because it's not defined in city code, but Tony's throwing it around like it is. We've confused, you have confused citizens. And if you sit here and look at me and like, man, that guy's crazy. He doesn't know what he's talking about. This is, this is, this is perfect for litigation. This is wonderful. I am so happy she made this comment. They don't have any, she doesn't have any idea. FFS, guys, what are you doing?
All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Leo?
Yeah, just briefly, the ALF ambulance has a staffing amendment and we took the red line and just made it into an actual amendment to the agreement that was provided to council. Thanks.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Katie, second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move next to item eight. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the petition to vacate a drainage and utility easement over PID fourteen, tag eight-two-five-zero-zero, tag zero-zero, tag zero-four-zero, Outlot D, Vermillion Grove. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for this item.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Before you this evening, we did have a public hearing scheduled for a vacation of a drainage and utility easement. We do not need this on. There we go. For drainage and utility easement in Outlot D of the Vermillion Grove Development, at this time, we're asking that that item be continued. We were planning on having the plat that is proposed for the property in conjunction with the vacation of the easement itself. The applicant is changing up the plat a little bit, so we won't be seeing that until the December regular meeting on the sixteenth. So we're just looking to combine the the plat and the vacation of the easement at the same meeting. Doesn't make sense at this point to hold the public hearing to vacate the easement until we have the plat approved as well. So the action as requested this evening is just to continue the public hearing to the December sixteenth regular city council meeting.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Katie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we'll continue the public hearing to the December sixteenth regular city council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item twelve then, under the amended agenda under New Business, to accept bids and award a contract for the Rambling River Center project. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are excited to be here this evening for the next step in the Rambling River Center renovation project, which is to accept bids and award a contract. As a reminder, an agreement with JLG Architects for schematic design through construction phase for the Rambling River Center project was approved by city council on May sixth of two thousand and twenty-four. The engineering team on the project is Poulsen &amp; Clark, which includes electrical, mechanical, and structural engineering. The renovation work includes, but is not limited to relocation of the fitness room, new main entry, two new gender-neutral restrooms, an outdoor patio, replace the roof and all exterior doors and windows, new rooftop mechanical units, new switchgear, which is electrical, new interior finishes, flooring, painting, and new stone tiles. Just to review the project schedule, we are here tonight, November eighteenth, to accept the bids and award a contract. We have been on 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 task since we started this schedule in May with a JLG. If things are approved tonight, we will plan for a pre-construction meeting the week of December second, two thousand and twenty-four, with substantial completion by March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. As a reminder, at the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, city council approved the plans and specifications and authorized the advertisement for bids. The plans and specs were based on the agreement with JLG Architects approved on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. This full scope of the proposed renovation work identified in the planning study that JLG did that was approved by city council in January of two thousand and twenty-four, and the Kraus Anderson facility condition assessments that were identified at the Rambling River Center. City council author also either authorized the advertisement for bids this same evening. The advertisement for bids was posted in several places, including the Dakota Towne Tribune on October eleventh and eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Quest, CDN Online, the Minnesota Builders Exchange, the Rochester Builders Exchange, and the city's website. Bids were due Tuesday, November fifth, at two P M. It opened and read at Tuesday, November fifth, at three P M. Eight bids were received. CM Construction, Inc. of Burnsville, Minnesota is the low bidder. Here you can see the bids, all eight bids. CM Construction Company's bid was two million twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The engineer's estimate for this project for construction costs only was one million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Please note, the engineer's estimate didn't include mobilization and permit fees, but these are included in the bids as shown on this screen. If we were to remove the mobilization and permit fees from CM Construction's bid, the difference between, the difference between the engineer's estimate and CM Construction Company was twenty-eight thousand, five hundred between the engineers and CMs. Also, as you can see, the spread between the lowest five bidders is just a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. As a reminder, this project will be funded by community project funding, fiscal year twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a donation of fifty thousand dollars from Midwest Bank for construction of the outdoor patio, and one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand in tax abatement bonds. Please note, this two, two million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand is the total amount available for both the construction and soft costs. Soft costs include architect, engineering fees, testing, inspections, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. To capture the benefit of the city's tax-exempt status for building materials, the city will need to eventually enter into a purchase agent agreement. Purchasing agent agreements are built for construction projects, and the city stands to save money by going this route. With construction projects, there might be surprises or issues requiring a change that can't wait for the next city council meeting for approval. Thus, staff is requesting approval of change orders for a total amount of a hundred thousand dollars with a maximum amount of fifty thousand dollars allowed for any single change order increase without prior city council approval. A little bit about CM Construction Company, Inc. of Burnsville. Chuck and Mary Peterson started CM Construction Company in nineteen ninety-two and are still involved currently in the day-to-day operations of the company. They have successfully completed similar projects in other metro cities and school districts, including recently Dakota County, the city of Edina, and the city of Prior Lake. I spoke with staff members from each of these entities. Things I heard from each of these were they communicated regularly and provided detailed information. Project was completed on time and at or under budget. Good managing of subs was one of the comments I heard. Some project subs run wild, not on this one. All would work with CM Construction Company again, and I know one city mentioned that they plan to use them on some lower projects that they don't have to put out a bid and can go right to a company for. A little bit about the Rambling River Center project superintendent from CM Construction, he will be full-time on the project, meaning he won't share his services with another project. A little bit more about him, he was raised in Farmington. He remembers going to the center when it was a library. He's a Farmington High School graduate and his mom still lives in the neighborhood. So we thought that was an interesting fact that hopefully we'll have someone on on the team from CM Construction that has more than enough pride for for the project. The action requested tonight is to accept the bids and award a contract for the Rambling River Center project to CM Construction Company, Inc. of Burnsville in the amount of two million, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, and adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash one oh eight that approves the following agreements: the AIA one oh one, two thousand and seventeen, the AIA one zero one, two thousand and seventeen, Exhibit A, which is the insurance, the supplementary conditions modifying the AIA one oh one, two thousand and seventeen, and the AIA one oh one, two thousand and seventeen, Exhibit Insurance, and the purchasing agent agreement. Approve the authorizing contracts in substantially the form submitted, and the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute the authorizing contracts on behalf of the council. Staff may approve change orders without council approval up to a total of a hundred thousand dollars with the maximum amount of fifty thousand dollars allowed for any single change order. Staff is permitted to execute these and other relevant documents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Katie?
I have no questions. It's exciting to see this project come to fruition after years of discussing it and also the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant coming in to help fund it is is awesome. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I really appreciate your work on this, Kelly. And I, the cool part is the story about the contractor. And since David Pritzloff is here, I know he can relate to that, too, that, you know, it's kind of important to know a little story about our developers that are coming in here. So appreciate that part, too.
Nick?
You guys said it best. I'm excited to see this one through the finish line.
Holly?
No questions. I know our our residents are are happy to see it started and are going to be happier to see it finished. So let's go.
I don't have any questions. I I appreciate the due diligence of our process here. And I mean, obviously, the the three-quarter million dollar grant, you know, even though it was in congressionally-directed spending from, you know, fiscal year twenty-three, it's almost twenty-five now. It kind of gives us a precursor to what's next with the PD. So it's just great to see it come in, come into fruition and the end of March will be here before we know it and it'll be amazing on the other side. So thank you to you and your team for all your hard work. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the action as requested.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Katie, second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Burnettz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, next on our agenda is item ten. Under petitions requesting communications is the final plat and planned, final plat and final planned unit development for the Farmington Technology Park. Tony.
All right. Good evening, councilman and mayor. Before you this evening is the final plat and final planned unit development for the Farmington Technology Park. Tract is the applicant in there requesting the review of the final plat and final PUD. The property consists of three parcels, as the council is aware. It includes the Fountain Valley Golf Course and the former Angus property, which consists of two separate parcels, which are currently owned by the school district. The plant itself consists of three lots, spread over just three hundred and thirty-eight acres. Lot one, block one, is just over a hundred and fifty acres. It's the northern portion of the data center campus. Lot two, block one, is two-point-zero-seven acres. This would be deeded to the city for utility purposes. And then the third lot is lot one, block two, which is a hundred and eighty-five plus acres. This in, this includes the southern portion of the data center campus. This lot also is encumbered with approximately about sixty-nine acres of floodplain that runs through the property. The plat does provide a seventy-five-foot-wide right-of-way along the eastern boundary of lot one, block one. This would be for the future Dakota County Biscayne Avenue. The city council did approve the preliminary plat and preliminary planned unit development on November fourth. The final plat is consistent with that approved preliminary plat. This is just a copy of the plat itself, showing the the three lots, with the two larger lots being split by two hundred and twenty-fifth street. And then the lot two, block one, the two-point-seven, two-point-zero-seven acres lot is in the very northwest corner of the plat itself, adjacent to County or Minnesota fifty. As council is aware, Tract is proposing this as a master planned data center technology park with up to twelve data center buildings and two administrative buildings. That would equate to about six data center buildings and one administrative building per lot. Keep in mind that when we reviewed this at the preliminary plat stage, what was shown was a representative site plan that basically shows the maximum of what could be built out on that property. And that's what's reflected here on this slide. Doesn't mean that's what is ultimately going to be built there. The square footage of the data centers, again, based off of the maximum, the northern campus would be up to one-point-six million square feet and nine hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet on the southern campus. The northwest corner of lot one, block two, is labeled for reserved for future electric utilities. This would be a potential location for a electric substation, as that would be accessory use for any data center use. Do want to mention future site plans will be required to be approved by the planning commission prior to construction of any data center building or ancillary use on the property itself. There are four anticipated accesses for the two campuses. The north campus would include access off of Minnesota fifty and two hundred and twenty-fifth street west. The southern camp- The southern campus would be off of two hundred and twenty-fifth Street West and Biscayne Avenue. There are turn lane improvements that will be required, both on Trunk Highway three and Minnesota fifty as part of this development that was done as part of a traffic study that was, that the applicant had previously done that indicated the need for those type of improvements. Now we come to the final planned unit development. We are looking to do this as an ordinance versus how we've historically done these, which is through a planned unit development agreement. Ordinance will put the, basically the same things that would be outlined in any PUD agreement, but put it into code essentially. Really what that helps with is if anybody's looking to find that information, it's not in an agreement that may be tucked under someone's desk or hard to find, at least with the ordinance in place. All that information would be basically in city code, and we would move forward with any PUD going forward in this fashion as well. So, it's a process that staff is changing to move forward with, with any PUD moving forward, so council is aware. With the PUD, there are fourteen different areas that are discussed in the ordinance that you have before you. I do want to mention that since the planning commission meeting, the developer has offered some additional restrictions, if you will, that are included in the ordinance that you have in front of you. Some of them deal with setbacks, additional setbacks, and buffering. Staff does find those acceptable. There, again, additional restrictions that are being placed. So, we did include that in the prepared ordinances before you this evening. As I had mentioned, there are fourteen areas that are identified in the PUD. It goes from building setbacks, natural buffers, landscaping, general design standards, building height, fences, electric utility lines, noise, parking, substations, private communication towers, maximum lot coverage, lighting, and then access. As far as the building setback, and what I have here is the actual written form of what's in your ordinance for the design standards. What is shown in yellow is what has been changed since the planning commission. And then the green areas are the ones that are recent as of, was it recent as of today, actually, so. Building setbacks, again, provides for a minimum setback of buildings from property lines. This includes a minimum setback of two hundred and fifty feet from any property line adjacent to residential uses. A hundred and fifty-foot setback from any property line not adjacent to residential uses. A forty-foot setback from the right-of-way of two hundred and twenty-fifth Street. What is shown here in green includes a setback of two hundred and fifty feet for properties that are adjacent to two hundred and twenty-fifth Street, specifically on the south side. It's just clarifying that, that that is the intent to include those properties in that two hundred and fifty-foot setback as well. Natural buffers provides for a forty-foot wide natural buffer along the majority of the perimeter of the site. Again, what is shown in green at the bottom of this page here illustrates some additional extra wide buffering, specifically along what would be the southwest corner of the northern campus. It would provide for a buffer of eighty feet in that location versus the forty feet, so. Landscaping, this provides for types of plantings that will be used throughout the site, allows for the use of rock, gravel, or mulch as an accent material for maintenance areas adjacent to buildings and grounds, or buildings or around utility access points. It also provides standards for the landscaping of parking lots. It also discusses the berms, including berm height and construction timing of those berms. The fourth area is the general design standards. So, this thing, this would include things such as facade standards, screening requirements, things like that. Provides language that provides protection from undifferentiated surfaces on principal building facades by requiring the use of at least two of the following design elements, being the change in building height, building setbacks, fenestration, changes in building materials, so pattern, texture, color, use of accent materials, overhangs, use of canopies or porticos, arcades, and variations in the roof line, including full windows, green walls, and other enhanced design elements that could be approved by the planning commission. Provides language regarding the screening of both ground level and above-ground mounted mechanic equipment and structures. Number five is regarding building height. Maximum building height on the site for principal structure is eighty feet. However, the maximum height at building setback line is fifty feet. The provision allows for a setback approach to building height. For each one foot increase of building height, the building must be setback five feet. Maximum building height for accessory structures, fifty. Provides language that any building that is eighty feet in height must be setback a minimum four hundred feet from the property line adjacent to a residentially zone property. Number six, fences. Provides requirements for security fencing and perimeter fencing. Allows for security fencing up to fourteen feet in height and perimeter fencing to a maximum of seven feet in height. Number seven, electric utility lines. Provides language on the need for electric utility lines and their construction as part of the overall center, data center project. Number eight, noise. Provides language that all noise generated from site shall meet the requirements that are established by the MPCA. Provides language that noise study be prepared at time of site plan that demonstrates that the applicable noise levels will not be exceeded based on the specific systems and equipment that will be used at the site. Provides language requiring the installation of physical sound attenuation measures on any mechanic equipment that is installed at the data center building located within one thousand two hundred feet of any adjacent residential use under certain circumstances. And then number nine, parking. Requires a minimum of one parking space for each one thousand square feet of office use on site. Ten discusses substations and the need for outdoor mechanical and electrical equipment that must be fenced and screened. States that fencing around a substation must be setback thirty feet from a property line adjacent to residentially zone property, and that any substation equipment must be setback minimum fifty feet from a property line adjacent to residentially zone property. Number eleven, private communication towers. This provides language that these are permitted up to a maximum height of eighty feet and are subject to the building setback requirements as well. Twelve, maximum lot coverage. Provides language that there is no maximum lot coverage for all uses built in the designated developable area. Thirteen, lighting. Provides standards for onsite lighting such as the maximum height of pole-mounted exterior lighting, which shall be eighteen feet. Additionally, the maximum height of any building-mounted exterior lighting fixture shall be thirty-five feet in height. And the last one deals with access, and this is a new one that states primary access drives shall be a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from any directly abutting residential property line. This provision does not, or does not apply to residential properties that are separated by right-of-way. So, those are the fourteen standards that are being considered this evening. I did want to show this as at the preliminary plat meeting. When this was discussed, there was a number of comments and/or discussion based on fencing for this site between what is perimeter fencing versus security fencing. What is shown here is a site section that shows what that would look like with the, basically, the perimeter fencing being at that six to seven-foot height, regular residential type of fencing. Could be chain link, wrought iron, wood, privacy fencing. The developer has indicated that they are willing to work with adjacent property owners to determine what type of fencing could or would be installed. And as you can see with the security fencing, that will be substantially located into the property while beyond the natural buffer and berming, that would be onsite as well. So, just to give you a perspective of the difference between perimeter and security fencing, so. The planning commission did review the final plat and final planned unit development at their regular meeting last week on November twelfth, and they did recommend an approval of both with a vote of five-zero. The action that is requested this evening is by separate action, approve the following. Adopt resolution twenty-two-four dash one oh nine, approving and authorizing the signing of the Farmington Technology Park contingent on the following, that being a development contract between the developer and the state Farmington shall be executed and security and fees paid. A submission of all documents required under the development contract shall be required. And then the second action would be adopt ordinance twenty-two-four dash twelve, approving the final PUD and establishing PUD one, Farmington Technology Park.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Nick?
So, just for point of process to understand this, between the final, or the preliminary and the final, you are basically compelled to approve unless you find significant reason between the preliminary and final. That would suggest that the preliminary was not done correctly. And everything that we have found to date in this revision list that you just went through is additive in its restrictions, right? Won't make you rehash all of it, but I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Holly?
No questions.
Steve?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, Tony, do you know why the developer is showing ten buildings on this one and they showed twelve on the previous one? Is it, I mean, is there a specific reason that we're aware of about that?
No, I don't know of a specific reason. As I had mentioned, the previous representatives-
Because it's intended to be a representative site plan.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll have a comment about that point later. Leah, is an ordinance stronger than a contract?
In, so in Farmington's, thank you for the question. So, in the past, Farmington for a PUD has done a PUD agreement, and that's been like zoning, but also an agreement, right? And that causes issues with recordability or modifying it eventually in the future, once the development's all done. So, it seemed like a very good opportunity to say, let's just make the switch to ordinance. It's something that's in the council's control. Everyone can access it. That doesn't mean that all of those other agreements are still valid zoning, but this way, it's much more just straightforward and practical and look-up-able.
Yeah, but I mean, the reality is you really can't amend a contract in the same way you can amend or change an ordinance. Because an ordinance applies essentially is the entire city of Farmington, you know, all its residents. This is the ordinances or the code that we live under. So, that seems to be more broad and flexible than a contract?
I personally would disagree with that, but it's much more under kind of the council's control than to have your zoning rely on someone else, you know, signing an amendment, like down the line or something like that to modify a PUD.
And to clarify, though, the ordinance is specific to the site, not citywide.
That's correct. Yep, this is just zoning overlay.
And it's meant to be add transparency for residents to be able to access this information and look it up, not an agreement, to Tony's point, that is put away somewhere else and can't be looked up.
Right, that you'd have to look up the records or, yeah, some other way.
Oh, for now, that's all I got.
Katie?
Yeah, I was wondering if Kristin or someone from Tract could come up in regards to Jeff's comment that was made earlier regarding the setback that was discussed with him of the additional hundred feet.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. My name is Jake Steen with Larkin-Hockman. We represent Tract. With respect to the increased natural buffer along those properties in the southwest corner of that northern parcel, and I would correct, I was not on that call, but it was an eighty-foot additional doubling that buffer. So, it was changed to double that buffer for those properties that don't have any intervening right-of-way, and that would be eighty feet.
And that's what's noted in here under number two on the natural buffers is what has been agreed to.
That's correct.
Hi, for the record, Kristin Dean. On the phone, I did not state a specific width in the increase of the buffer. I said that we were looking at increasing the buffer. I did not say a hundred feet. I absolutely did not say a hundred feet. I did not provide a number in that phone call. I said that we were increasing the width of the buffer, and that was something that we thought would help continue to work towards mitigating the impacts. And then we discussed that with the city and agreed to eighty feet addition, total. Did not say anything to him on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Without saying that, you're good. I appreciate the changes.
Jeff had an opportunity to speak earlier. I was asking for clarification from the other side.
Kate, Mr. Schlotter made a comment. Mr. Schotler made a comment. Councilmember Burnham asked for clarification from the other party. It's not picking sides or choosing who's right or who's wrong, and the net of it- The net-net of it was going to be my first comment, and that's another item has been added from a forty-foot setback to eighty. Now, if we weren't listening, if we weren't hearing people and we were arbitrarily just railroading decisions through, it would have been approved at the preliminary, and the final would come back and it would look the same. Every measure that's been mentioned by council that has come up has been addressed. The setback, the comment that I made and asked about the eighty-foot building height, and the depictive fit plan was approximately three hundred and ten feet. They took that feedback, they listened to the residents, and it was increased in the final PUD to four hundred feet, if they choose to go with eighty-foot buildings. Those are wins. To discount, for us to discount that and say, screw it, we're not listening to you, we're going to do it anyway, is false. We are listening. We continue to hear. And individually, both on behalf of the council and our team, we are working with the developer to make sure that there is a overlap, something in the middle. It's not going to- It's- We continue to listen. You continue to do whatever the hell you want. And no matter what it is, unless it's an absolute of what anyone who's in objection of this project believes, it won't be acceptable. That is absolutely not true. I sat out there with you for three hours. I told you more than once, I adore data centers. I told this entire group that more times than I could ever recount, and you know that. I suggested, when I was up there, I suggested, what about-
What about six? What's a tax revenue look like when you have six buildings? You're basing your total decision off of six, off of twelve buildings, not ten.
I have-
Where did we get in this process? Where did we get to have a say?
I have closing statements during roundtable respective of how this goes. I don't have any additional questions or comments as it pertains to the final plat and final PUD.
Motion to approve the adopt resolution of twenty-two-four one-oh-nine?
No, just hold on, please. I, Mayor- Mr., Mr. Pritzloff, please, for a second. Mayor, are we allowed? So I thought you, you were asking for questions. Is this also the same time for our comments or is it just questions for Tony?
Comments and/or questions-
Okay.
Are always permissible.
Okay, so you started to make a motion, I just wanted to finish.
No, you can finish.
All right. So, you know, my opinion about the project is no different than it was two weeks ago. I, I would really, I mean, this decision today has tormented me for the past two weeks. And, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable with this. I, I genuinely do not feel like the public has had an opportunity just to complain for a session or two. That's my own opinion. Now, they, it is true, and the, and the city attorney is true, that, that the planning commission is the vehicle to do that. It would be a courtesy at our end, but I do appreciate that a couple of our residents allowed me to kind of check out, you know, the view from their back property today. For the heck of it, I decided to drive up to Rosemount, and I just want to, I mean, for the perspect, you know, I, I think this is the part I really would implore my peers to consider, because whatever we do here is going to be the standard for whatever we do in the future, and we are the body that is ultimately in control. Staff does a very nice job of doing their part, and it, it wouldn't be relevant for us to be critical of staff recommendation. They do their part, but ultimately, it's our decision as elected officials to do our part. So I'm looking at, and boy, this is moving slowly. So I was up at the Meta Data Center. Now, keep in mind, Meta is about seven-hundred-thousand square feet. This proposal's about three-point-six times larger. So proportionally, you would think that maybe the standards might look different, and if I can get this darn thing to pull up, but the, and it's just, yeah, going crazy on me, so I'm not going to do that to the public while they're watching. The bottom, oh, no, here it is. Well, maybe at some point I'll get it here. The bottom line is the setbacks for, so along County Road forty-two, the setback for County Road forty-two is over a thousand feet. Now, keep in mind, the entire Meta project, there's not homes anywhere nearby. I mean, there's a couple of projects that are a little bit down the way, but where it's situated right now, there's actually nothing else right by there. There is a thousand-foot setback in one area, nine-hundred in a different area, six-hundred in a different area, and there's also unique setbacks for the electrical substations. And so I think, you know, this is our first run at doing this, and I do think members of the public have made some really good points with, with the fact that we need to slow down and do it right, not only for our taxpayers, but quite frankly, for the developer as well. I mean, we need to make sure that we are the ones that are essentially collaborating and making those important decisions. The other point I was going to make here, which, again, this is still not pulling up, so we'll just leave that part alone. You know, being out in Jeff's backyard, two-hundred-and-fifty feet is hardly anything. You know, I think that we should really slow this down. We need to look at what a seven-hundred-and-fifty or thousand-foot setback. And the reason I asked Tony about the number of buildings, this is a point I was going to make, the reason I asked Tony about the number of buildings is when we're talking about setbacks, the number of buildings is incredibly important. So if we have, you know, up to twelve buildings, that's going to be situated on this parcel much differently than six buildings is going to be. So, you know, and I know you know this, Tony, so, you know, if you can imagine, let's say, eight buildings, the setbacks are probably going to be different, but if we define the setback, you know, requirement as being two-hundred-and-fifty feet, well, then we, as a city, have boxed ourselves into a corner. And I'm going to tell you right now that if I lived on Calico Court and I saw two-hundred-and-fifty feet out and the possibility of a fifty-foot building, that's terrifying to me. That is way too close. You know, we can argue or talk about the distinction between mixed-use commercial-industrial and industrial. I personally believe this should be zone industrial, but then again, I didn't support the rezoning last week. That's my own personal opinion. And I do think it's super important for us to have more thoughtful discussions. You know, this is two critical decisions or two massive decisions within a two-week time period. I don't think it's a wrong idea at all for us to delay this, and I would make a motion to table this.
Are there any other comments or questions for Tony? There's, there's already a motion on the table, and Dave, with all due respect-
That would be the process.
Dave, with all due respect, I'll handle it. There's a, there's a motion on the table. Yeah, hold on one second.
Well, sir, I mean, the only thing, it is my, it is my own-
Six-hundred feet is to the guardhouse on the east side. That's, but it's a thousand feet around every place house. Six-hundred feet is to the guardhouse.
Are you referring to Meta?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking at the agreement-
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, literally, I have the December twenty-first packet from last year pulled up, and if I hadn't scrolled ahead, I'd be right there and have all the number. Oh, here it is. Here it is. Actually, I will read this, because unless the city of Rosemount's documents are different. So, and I think this is super important. County Road forty-two, nine-hundred-foot setback. Gosh, Blaine Avenue on the six-hundred-foot setback on the south, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot setback, and then on Audrey Avenue, of which there is a housing development going in in that area, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five feet. The substation on Blaine Avenue, five-hundred-and-four feet, and on the south, one-hundred-and-ninety-two. That's why I think us as a council need to talk more about this, because two-hundred-and-fifty feet is not going to cut it in this area.
How much of that feedback have you given directly to staff who have been working with Trac on this project over the last six months?
I have, you know, to be honest, I have not given staff this specific comment. I, I will just leave it at that.
Are there any other questions or comments for Tony? Okay. The first motion on the table is by Katie, if you'd like to withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
Can I ask the two questions? The public safety questions. Can I ask the two questions before you take the vote?
Go ahead, Dave.
Have you guys had any discussion with the fire department? So, back on my term, uh, term on the council, my very first development that we were approving was a city street that went down to a dead end. And I went and talked to our solid waste manager at the time, which was Ben, which was a great staff member, a great guy. Went up and talked to him and said, hey, we have our garbage trucks running down this street, and they have to back all the way out. That was the way the development was, was made. And he goes, never had a council member come talk to me about that. I said, all right. I said, we will not do that. We will not put one person in jeopardy of being hit by a, a, a garbage truck backing up. We came back to the council, we changed that development so that there's a cul-de-sac in there for all police, fire, ambulance, school buses, and everybody to be able to make a clear turnaround and not jeopardize anybody's life on this. As far as the fire department on this building, are they able to get a fire under control on this many eighty-foot buildings, or will that whole side of town just be ash? That's my first question. Have you had conversations with our fire department, the fire chief, as if they could handle something like this in an emergency?
Tony, on this or any other project, do we consult with public safety-
We do.
-as to how it will ultimately affect them?
We do, yes.
Do we continue to have further conversations with our leadership at both departments within public safety as developments start to proceed and ultimately a build plan is presented, density, contents, all the things? Do we continue with that process?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So there has been, because there has been conversations with the fire chief that, I get that we're, we have mutual aid, but if mutual aid from other cities are, are out on their calls, you've had conversations with our fire chief that our fire department would be able to handle a serious fire out of this location.
Tony, just answer the question. Yes.
Secondly, is the Angus property. My recollection is the school district still owns that. Quite frankly, doesn't Bryce still own the golf course until this is finalized, and then those things are, are sold? Does the school district, well, back when the school district bought that property, it was slated for a new school out there that the taxpayers had to pay for. Have you had discussions with the school district as to what they, they bought that for a new high school? Technically, are they going to put a high school out there? Legally, can they sell that for something like this? Have you just had discussions with the school board about this?
Our team, which includes the city administrator-
Have the council had workshops with the school board? When I was on the council, we had workshops with other entities, i.e. the school district, Apple Valley, Lakeville. Has the council, your policymakers, has the council had discussions with the school district? I'm sure he has, I'm sure she has, I'm sure she has. Have you?
The council has joint work sessions with the school board. Yes.
And you've talked to the school board about this particular property and this particular use?
On an individual basis, I won't speak for my peers, but as a body in a public forum? No, that is not our lane.
That's a workshop.
The school district owns property who has a body of elected representatives to make decisions, ultimately sent to their subcommittees and their hired staff. For local government, i.e. city council, to start dabbling in school board matters? That is a gross overreach of government. We're the last people-
I'm not saying you're dabbling in their matters. I'm just saying, did you have workshops on them? Because when I was on the council and we were having all kinds of workshops where the new high school is, we met all the time. We had workshops, we had meetings, we had everything. What you're telling me is you're not having workshops with the school district. You may talk to them one-on-one, but that's not really the right way of doing this neither. As a body, you need to have a, a workshop with them. We had several of them.
Dave, you asked for two questions, I answered your questions. Steve? Steve, will you please restate your motion for the official record?
Yes, I will make a motion that council tables this item and direct staff to work with council and the planning commission to further discuss this project and define the standards that we are going to work with.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? There's no second.
Some people step up, look at yourselves, look what you're doing. This is your city.
I'd seek a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-four tac one-oh-nine approving and authorizing the signing of the Farmington Technology Park contingent on the following. One, a development contract between the developer and city of Farmington shall be executed and security and fees paid. Submission of all other documents required under the development contract shall be required.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Katie. Second by Nick. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernadette?
Yes.
I guess you just flipped us off like you did the last-
I'd seek a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four tac one-two approving the final PUD and establishing PUD tac one Farmington Technology Park.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Katie. Second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernadette?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Leah, anything to add there?
For roundtable or generally? No.
For roundtable.
Neither.
Nick? Holly?
No.
Katie?
No.
Steve?
None.
Kelly?
I just want to announce that open door is tomorrow at Faith Methodist United Church with the Rounding River Center closed. It will be there until we reopen. Faith is located at seven-ten A Street in Farmington. They can either enter on Seventh Street or A Street, same time still, three to four-thirty p.m.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief Price?
Nothing at this time.
Chief Rutherford?
Nothing, sir.
Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just would like to remind the public that there is a groundbreaking ceremony for the Rye Apartments that will take place tomorrow afternoon, and then on Wednesday, we'll be doing a ribbon-cutting at the new gym in town, which is called Revelation Fitness. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Nothing this evening there.
All right. We've had a long two hours on top of numerous other meetings and planning commission meetings, and whether people want to believe it or accept it or not, these decisions are not easy and they're not taken lightly. Believe it or not, the hardest part about sitting in these seats is the question gets often asked, what if it was in your backyard? What if it was next to you? Part of the commitment that you make to this seat is that even if it is in your backyard, you have to make a decision with the majority of the community. And I have listened to the community for six years.
Precedent wanted to vote for you. You lost both of those precincts.
I have listened to residents for six years. We have needs in this community that have to be met.
You're a guy with no fucking agenda whatsoever. No agenda whatsoever. You lost, you lost by four, you won by four-hundred votes. You don't have a sense that you're talking about listening? You won by four-hundred votes.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Holly, second by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at nine-oh-seven.